Welcome to Eerie Trail where forgotten roads, haunted silence, and long shadows tell stories no one else dares to remember if you're drawn to the strange. The lost and the unsettling, you're in the right place. Like the video, drop your thoughts. In the comments and subscribe for more stories that don't just scare, they stay with you. They had planned the trip for weeks. Five students from the University of Texas at Austin Cameron, Leila, Josh, Rosa, and Devin needed to complete a final project for their American folklore seminar. The assignment was open-ended, collect. Regional legends, investigate their origins and present findings in a creative way. Leila, always the ambitious one, proposed they leave the city for a weekend and camp in a ghost town rumored to be cursed. The town was called Ransom, a forgotten blood on the map northwest of Abilene, not far from the ghost gray expanse of Villano Estacado. It had been abandoned in the 1950s after a series of mysterious disappearances. The locals said the land turned bad, dry, angry. The professors didn't question the trip, they were thrilled the students showed so much initiative. By Friday evening, they were deep into the Texas wilderness, the long dirt road kicking dust behind them as Cameron's. SUV rumbled through mesquite scrub and sandstone. The sun hung low, a swollen orange bleeding across the sky. Josh read from a printout, "Ransom, Texas. Population once: 219. Founded in 1886. Abandoned by 1958. Last documented incident. Five members of the Winters family vanished without a trace. Only a dog was found, with its eyes gone. No one laughed." They found the town after sunset. A crumbling main street, a collapsed church steeple, the skeletal remains of a general store. The air felt dry in a way that wasn't just weather it. Was hollow, like breath sucked from lungs. The only sound was the occasional wind, dragging itself through broken windows and rattling the tin roofs that hadn't rusted away. They set up camp behind what was left of the sheriff's office. Laid out their tents, built a small fire. Devin, always the skeptic, poked fun at the place, kicking a chunk of charred wood from the fire pit. "It's just a forgotten dump." Number. Spirits, no curses. People left because it's a goddamn oven out here. Rosa, quieter than the others, glanced around. Still, feels wrong. That night, they went over their plan. Interview locals from nearby towns in the morning, search. The area for documents or artifacts during the day and record video diaries at night. "It'll be like Blair Witch but with more footnotes," Leila said with a grin. But there was no sleep that night. Sometime around 3:00 AM, Cameron woke to the sound of footsteps crunching gravel. He unzipped his tent, heart quick. "Josh?" He called softly. No answer. He stood, flashlight in hand. The wind was gone. The silence pressed down like a weight. Then he saw it. A figure standing at the far end of the road. Tall, motionless. Not Josh. Not anyone he recognized. When he flicked on his flashlight, it vanished. The next morning, everyone was shaken. Rosa said she'd had a dream of someone whispering in her ear from inside the tent. Leila looked pale, admitted she'd seen something move outside too. Devin. Laughed it off, but he didn't meet their eyes. They walked the town. In the sheriff's office, they found a moldy folder full of yellowed paper. Leila dug through it like gold. Letters from the 50s. Complaints, warnings. "Look at this herd." It calling in the wind again. Like it did before the preacher's boy disappeared. Another read. "I think it watches through the glass. I keep waking up with mud in my bed." Josh found an old journal behind the pulpit of the collapsed church. Pages brittle, thee. Ink bled and faded. But one phrase repeated over and over in trembling handwriting. "We're still here, still buried, still hungry." They camped another night, reluctantly. At dusk, Rosa went missing. They searched for hours. Flashlight sweeping over brush, old walls, the dry bones of abandoned homes. Her bag was found near the well at the center of town. No signs of struggle, just her bag and her phone. Screen cracked, still recording. The last video showed her. Walking near the well. Then a voice not hers. Deep, wet, not a word. Just breath. They called the police. They never arrived. By Sunday, Josh refused to sleep. His eyes were bloodshot. He paced, muttered. Said he'd seen Rosa outside his tent. The night before. Said she wasn't moving right. Said she whispered to him but her mouth wasn't open. Leila tried to calm him down, but then she saw a two-something crouched on the edge of their firelight, fingers too long, face half shadow. That night, Josh disappeared too. They found scratches on the inside walls of his tent like heat. Tried to claw his way out of something. Blood on the zipper. A single molar left behind in his sleeping bag. By Monday, the project was irrelevant. They wanted out. But the SUV wouldn't start. Engine dead. Battery gone. Even the road seemed... Different. Endless. They drove for hours before realizing they were looping back to the same place. The same collapsed church. The same rotted town sign. Cameron broke down, screamed into the wind, swore at the sky. Devin stopped talking. Leila found the last entry in the journal one neither of them remembered reading. The date wasn't from... The 1950s. It was today. "The town takes what it's owed. The living feed the dead. The bones keep count. And they are not yet full." That night, Leila begged Cameron to stay awake with her. But she woke alone. Only his boots remained, filled with ash. Devin was gone too. She screamed until her throat gave out. Screamed into the cracked walls of the church. Screamed at the scorched earth and Skiles's dark. Something watched. Something old and buried beneath the dust. It had eyes like pits. It had fingers like roots. It lived under the town. It fed on memory and fear and the soft warmth of life. By morning, Leila was still there. She walked into... The well. The camera was recovered months later by a hiker who'd gotten lost and wandered into Ransom by mistake. Authorities found no sign of the students. Just five tents. One vehicle with no engine. Five cell phones with batteries melted from the inside. And a notebook sealed in a Ziploc bag. Scrawled across the final page. "Still here, still buried, still hungry." They say you can still hear someone crying from inside the well if you stand over it long enough, but don't look down. No matter what you hear, don't look down asterisk. They never found the body. That's the first thing you need to know. Everyone talks about the incident. Like it was a local tragedy, a freak disappearance in a town known for its long highways and short memories. But I remember it all. Every minute. Every noise. Every shadow. Because I was there. And I'm the only one who made it out. Dot it started with a group study. Five of us. Friends kind of. Not close, not exactly. More like proximity friends people you end up in projects with because your last names land near each other on the attendance sheet. There was me. Erica. Then Paul, the smartass. Denise who barely spoke above a whisper. Kevin who played dumb. But had this weird, twitchy energy that made you wonder what he was holding back. And Missy, the pretty one. The one everyone noticed. Dot we were juniors at a college just outside of Lubbock. Took a course called Cultural Memory and Trauma in American History. Real light stuff. Our final was a research paper and a group presentation. On Forgotten Events from Texas History Natural Disasters, Massacres, Missing Towns. Professor Mandl wanted something immersive, creative. "Dig deep," he said. "Texas has more ghosts than people. Find one." Kevin did. He found a thread buried in an old microfilm at the library. Something from the 1940s. A mining accident near a town called Grafton. Up north, past Wichita Falls. Except it wasn't really an accident. The papers said the mine was sealed. In 1947 after a series of unexplained deaths. "Men went strange," is how it was written. Not insane strange. Said they spoke in tongues, wouldn't leave the tunnels. One man clawed out his own throat while smiling. Another burned himself. Alive with kerosene and danced until he fell. And then the mine just closed. The town disappeared. No official records after 1948. Dot it was perfect for the project. Dot we rented a car and made the drive on a Friday. Six hours on dead roads, past rusted fences and dry pastures, towns that hadn't changed since the Depression. Grafton wasn't on. Any GPS. The coordinates came from an old USGS map Kevin found online. We had to turn off onto a gravel road marked only with a bent bullet-ridden sign. Private property. Nitrogen monoxide exit. That should have been the first warning, but we were stupid. Excited. Hungry for something spooky we could turn into an A+ PowerPoint. Dot after twenty minutes of gravel and heat and silence. We found it dot Grafton dot nothing left but a few brick foundations. Some scorched wood beams jutting from the ground like broken teeth. And the entrance to the mine sealed with rusted steel. A heavy wheel bolted across the door. A sign leaned against the rocks. "Do not open. Whatever you hear, do not answer." We laughed at first dot Kevin took a selfie with it. Paul made a joke about Chernobyl. Missy climbed a nearby hill to get a shot of the whole area. Denise just stared at... The mine door like it was calling her. Dot and then Kevin turned the wheel. I told him not to dot Denise backed away. "Don't open it," she whispered. "I don't know why, just don't." But Kevin did. The metal screamed when it shifted like something. Alive. The air that came out was dry, but wrong like it hadn't been touched by light in a thousand years. Dust poured out, thick and yellow. We went inside dot just for a minute. Flashlights on. The walls were black with soot and something else scratches. Hundreds of them, overlapping. Like someone had spent years trying to dig out with their fingernails. Dot Paul. Found an old tin lunchbox. Inside was a set of teeth. Human. Missy found a notebook, its pages soggy and moldy, but one was still legible. Written in red ink. We made a door and something answered. "It is not God, it is not the devil, it is worse." We left after that. Shaken, jumpy, but still joking. Because that's what people do when they don't want to believe they're scared. But... Denise didn't speak the whole ride back. She sat in the backseat with her hands in her lap, staring out the window at the empty plains. At one point I saw her lips moving. Whispering something over and over. I leaned back and asked her. If she was okay. Dot she didn't answer me, but I heard what she was saying. Over and over again. "I hear them. They're awake. They're under us." That night, back at the motel. Things? Got worse got Paul started coughing, then choking. He ran into the bathroom and hacked something into the sink. I followed him. What came out of his mouth wasn't blood, it was dirt. Packed, black damp soil. It smelled like rot. Like something long buried. Kevin laughed. Must have swallowed some in the mine. Nasty man. But Paul didn't laugh. He kept looking at his hands like they weren't his. I saw him that night. In the mirror, just standing there, staring at himself for hours not moving. Not blinking. Dot the next morning. He was gone. Door wide open. Keys still on the table. Missy swore she saw someone standing over her while she slept. Thought it was a dream until she found red handprints on her sheets. Long fingers. Too long got Denise finally broke. She sat in the shower, fully clothed, rocking back and forth. Wouldn't look at us. Wouldn't speak. Only thing she said all? "Day was this. They're not in the mine anymore. They're in us." Kevin was next. That night, I woke up to a noise something scraping, dragging. I walked out into the parking lot of the motel and saw him crawling across the asphalt on all fours, sobbing. His back was moving. Bulging. Like something was trying to come out. I ran. Dot got in the car. Started driving. Missy followed, screaming. Denise wouldn't come. Just stood by the motel door. Whispering to herself, fingers in her ears. "I don't remember." Most of the drive. We got back to Lubbock before sunrise. Dot Missy wouldn't speak after that. She dropped out of school. Her parents moved her to California. She sends me postcards sometimes blank except for one word. "Underneath." Kevin and Paul were declared missing. Dot Denise was found dead three weeks later. In her dorm closet. Covered. In dirt. Mouth full of teeth that weren't hers, and me? I stayed quiet. Told no one. But I hear it now. Every time I close my eyes. And the walls. And the drains. In the silence between breaths. Dot it's under us. Dot not buried. Dot waiting. Dot and it knows my name. There's a stretch of highway in central Texas that's not on any modern map. Dot locals call it the Cut. No markers. No exits. No mile signs. Just two narrow lanes, half eaten by weeds and thyme, hemmed in by pecan groves and dying mesquite. It. Forks off the main road somewhere between Waco and Temple. Barely visible unless you know to look for it. Dot no one takes it twice. But we didn't know that. Dot there were four of us. Me, Andy, Nate, Kara, and Marcus. All seniors at UTSA. We were driving back from a music festival in Dallas, burned out and half drunk on gas station coffee and bad weed. Nate was behind the wheel. Kara rode shotgun with her feet up on the dash. Marcus and I were stuffed in the... Back with our gear. Dot it was about 2:30 AM when Nate saw it. A side road cutting left off the highway. No lights, no signs, just a dirt track that turned to pavement half a mile in. Shortcut, he said. GPS says it reconnects with 35 South after twenty miles. Shaves off forty minutes. Kara frowned. "That doesn't look like a road." "It's a road," Nate insisted. Already turning. Dot it was not a road. Dot it was a mistake. The second we turned onto it, everything felt... Wrong. You know how sometimes you walk into a room and feel like someone's just left it? That charged, static feeling like you're being watched? That was the cut. And it only got worse the deeper we went. The air grew thicker, humid despite the cold. Trees leaned over the road like they were listening. Our headlights didn't throw light the way they should. They stopped short. Swallowed by shadows that felt almost solid. The GPS lost signal. Phones died one by one. Marcus joked that we'd entered the Twilight Zone, but his voice was shaky. I watched Kara glance out the window, then snap her head away like she'd seen something she wasn't ready to admit. Dot ten minutes in, we hit. The first sign. Dot literally. Dot a rusted waist-high post standing crooked in the middle of the road. Black letters scorched into it. Turn back. Not too late. We laughed it off. Nervous laughter. Nate swerved around it. But we didn't laugh when we saw the second one. The echo remembers. "It does not forgive." "What the hell does that mean?" Marcus asked. His voice cracked. Dot no one answered. Dot the trees grew tighter. The road cracked beneath us like dry bone. We hadn't seen another car, house, or light since we turned. The world behind us was gone. And up ahead, the black seemed to stretch forever. That's when Kara started crying. Dot just out of nowhere. Silent at first. Then full-on sobbing, shaking. Her head like she was trying to block something out. "I saw something," she said. "In the mirror, I saw us, but we were dead. All of us, burned, twisted." Nate told her to shut up, he was scared too. "I could see it in his hands." Clenched so tight the steering wheel creaked. That's when we passed the third sign. Dot no post this time. Just blood-red paint smeared across the asphalt. Listen close. It's starting to sing. And we heard it. Dot not music. Not a voice. A hum. Dot low and distant, but growing. Like something winding up, deep underground. A vibration in the bones. Dot we should have stopped. Turned around. Got out and walked back to civilization. Dot but the road wouldn't let us. Dot every time Nate tried to turn around, the road looped. We passed. The same stretch again and again. A crooked mailbox, a broken fence. A dead coyote with its eyes missing. The hum grew louder. Dot Marcus started bleeding from his ears. Kara vomited. Thick, black bile. I prayed. Out loud. I don't even believe in God, but I prayed to something anything. That's when the fourth sign appeared. Lit up by the high beams like a corpse in a spotlight. They remember your faces. You came back. "You shouldn't have." Kara screamed. Marcus punched the window, screaming to get out. The humming turned into something else voices. A thousand of them. Whispering, laughing, chanting in a language I didn't understand but felt. Deep in my gut, in my memories. Like it was coming from inside my own skull. And then we saw the figure standing in the middle of the road. Dot not moving. Two. Tall. Skin tight like plastic stretched over bone. Its face was wrong. Smooth. No eyes. No mouth. But I swear it smiled. Nate swerved. The car flipped. I remember screaming. I remember glass. I remember Kara's arm snapping backwards like a paperclip. I remember fire. Then I woke up. Dot alone. Dot the car was gone. The road was gone, I was lying on a field of white dust. No trees, no sky. Just fog, silence. And the humming. Dot it was louder now. Dot closer. Dot I walked until I found another road. Not the Cut, a normal one. Paved and marked. A state trooper picked me up outside Hillsboro, over forty miles from where we turned. They. Searched for the others. Dot never found them. Not a trace. Not even Kara's phone, which I know was in her lap when the car flipped. The trooper said there's no road where I claimed we turned. No Cut. No forgotten lane connecting the highways. But I remember. I remember the signs. I... Remember the whispers. Dot and at night, when I close my eyes, I still hear the hum. And sometimes... I dream I'm still driving it. Dot still turning left where I should have gone straight. Still making the wrong choice. And in those dreams? I'm not alone in the car. They're all there. Dot burned, twisted. Dot smiling. There's a place about forty miles east of Marfa. Out in the desert past the last paved road, where the land folds in on itself like it's trying to bury something. The locals call it Lost Hollow, though you won't find it on any map. The... Only way to get there is to follow the fence posts. Wood ones, not barbed. Painted red at the top. They stretch across the desert like crooked fingers, leading nowhere. People say the hollow's cursed, some say haunted. My grandfather said it wasn't a place you go to. It's a place that comes to you when it wants something. I used to. Think it was just a story, until my brother went missing. His name was Jude, older by three years. He was the smart one, the favorite. The one who was supposed to leave town and do something big. But after our mother died, he stayed. Something... In him unraveled after the funeral. Quietly, slowly. He stopped talking about leaving. Stopped laughing. Started walking the desert at night. He'd come home with his boots full of sand and his eyes wrong. Like they were looking through you, not at you. The night he disappeared, he left the front. Door open. Didn't take his truck. Didn't leave a note. Just walked into the desert barefoot, shirtless. Like he was following something. Dot we searched for three days. Helicopters. Dogs, deputies from four counties. They found nothing. Dot no prints. No bones. No scraps of clothing. Just the red-tipped fence posts. And something else, something the sheriff didn't put in the report. A hole. Perfectly round. Six feet across. No dirt piled nearby. Like the earth had swallowed itself. No bottom. They could see. They roped it off. Didn't go near it. Didn't explain it. Dot after that. I started dreaming. Dot always the same. I'm walking through the desert at dusk. The sun's low, bleeding red across the sand. The wind's dead still. And the fence posts stretch ahead. Humming, not from wind, but from something beneath. Something alive. Dot and Jude is out there. I hear him, calling my name. I didn't want to believe it was real, but grief does strange things to people. Dot so one. Night, almost a year after he vanished, I followed the dreams. Packed water, boots, a pistol. Left just before dusk. Found the first red post by accident, bent at the edge of a dried-out creek bed, half-buried in scrub. I followed them east one by one like breadcrumbs dropped by something cruel. I walked for hours. Dot no sign of life. No sound. No moon. Dot just the posts and the heat that didn't leave with the sun. Dot and then I found it. Dot Lost Hollow. Dot it wasn't much. A depression in the earth, maybe a hundred yards wide. Ringed by dying mesquites and old bones. Coyote, deer, maybe something else. In the center stood a shack. Collapsed roof, sun-bleached planks. Door hanging open like a mouth gasping. Dot it wasn't in my dream. I went inside. Dot the air changed. Heavy. Oily. Like it hadn't moved in decades. Dust coated everything. The. Floor, the shelves, the cracked window glass. But there were footprints. Bare. Recent. Leading to the back wall, where a trapdoor sat half-covered in an old tarp. I should have turned around. I should have gone home. But, I heard him again. Dot Jude dot whispering. "My name from below." Dot I opened the TRAPDOR. Dot there were stairs cut into the stone. Spiraling down, I followed. The light died after twenty steps. My flashlight flickered. The walls dripped. Not water, something thicker. Darker.[1626.23] Not water, something thicker, darker. I kept going dot at the bottom. The stairs opened into a chamber, circular, wet, no ceiling I could. See. Just black above and stone all around, pulsing with that same low hum from my dreams. Jude stood in the center dot naked, emaciated, skin stretched, tight over bones that jutted wrong. But it was him. He smiled, and in that smile was something hollow. Something stolen, found it, he said, found the voice. He reached toward the wall dot it moved, peeled back like flesh, revealing not stone, but faces, hundreds of them, mouths open, eyes shut. As if frozen in the instant before a scream. And they were breathing dot slow, wet, together. I ran. I don't remember how I got out. Don't remember climbing the stairs, crossing the hollow, retracing the posts. But I woke up in my truck the next morning, parked sideways on the highway shoulder. Covered in sand. Blood on my sleeves dot no one believed me. They said I went out there drunk. That I passed out. That grief made me hallucinate, but I know what I saw, and I know what. I hear at night now dot voices dot faint at first dot then louder dot and always in threes. The first voice is Jude, calling me back. The second voice is my mother, saying nothing. Just sobbing, constant, endless. And the third? It isn't human dot it isn't kind dot it hums in the walls. And last week, I found a red post outside my bedroom, window. There's no desert here dot just oak trees and fences, but the hollow is coming anyway. Because it remembers, and it is hungry. They said the lake was cursed dot not in the usual way. No ghost stories, no drowning girls, no old Indian burial grounds. Just silence, just a feeling. When you didn't talk about unless you had to. One that hung over the town like humidity. Thick and invisible and always just under the surface. The lake didn't have a real name. On maps, it was just Lake Marlin, named after the town, which barely had eight hundred people left in it. But locals called it Stillwater, and they never swam in it. Not even in August, when the sun felt like it was peeling the skin off your shoulders and the asphalt stuck to your shoes. They said, Stillwater didn't take kindly to being disturbed. I hadn't been back to Marlin in almost fifteen years not. Since my father put a bullet through his mouth on our back porch and left me, and my mother with a silence that never really left the house. She moved to Austin the year after. I moved further, Boston eventually, and never came back, until she died. Cancer. Quick and ugly. The kind that strips the fat from your bones and your voice from your throat. I hadn't spoken to her in four years when the lawyer called. Apparently, she never sold the house. I inherited it by default dot so I came back. The house was the same dot same chipped paint. Same porch swing with the frayed rope. Same screen door with a tier in the corner that let the mosquitoes in every summer. Nothing had changed, but it felt hollow, like a museum where the ghosts hadn't learned how to hide properly. I spent the first two nights on the couch drinking, avoiding the back porch. Avoiding the lake. Stillwater was maybe half a mile. From our backyard. Just past the tree line. You could see it from the upstairs window if you leaned to the left. I used to fish there with my dad before everything turned sour. We never caught anything. I don't think anyone ever did. The lake didn't ripple, didn't sparkle. Didn't move dot it just sat there. Like it was watching. On the third night, I walked down to it. I don't know why. I'd had too much bourbon, and the heat was making the walls feel like they were breathing. I followed the old deer trail. Brush scratching at my legs, and the smell hit me before I even saw the water, wet metal and rot. Like blood that had been sitting too long. Stillwater looked the same dot dark, glassy, motionless. I threw a stone and dot no ripples dot just gone, swallowed. I stood there for a while, listening, not for anything in particular, just listening. That's when I heard it, a voice. Low and muffled. Like someone whispering underwater, I turned, thinking someone had come up behind me, but there was no one. Then I heard it again, this time it said my name, not shouted, not cried, just spoken. Calm and cold, like it was trying it out for the first. Time, I left. Didn't sleep that night dot the next morning, I went into town for coffee and gas. The diner was still there. So was the old woman who used to run it, though her hair had gone white and her eyes had gone hollow. You're one of the Randall boys, she said without smiling. Was, I said, just me now. She nodded like she already knew. You. Going down to the lake? She asked, real casual. Maybe, I said dot she leaned over the counter and whispered, don't listen if it talks. I didn't answer, just left. That night, I dreamed of my father. He was standing in the lake, water up to his chest. His mouth was open, but nothing came out, just bubbles. His eyes were bleeding. The sky behind him was wrong, too red like. It was on fire. When I woke up, there was mud on my feet dot and wet footprints on the stairs. I live alone. I didn't sleep the next night. I sat in the kitchen with the lights off and a knife on the table. I didn't know what I was expecting, something banging on the windows, maybe, screaming. Movement dot but there was nothing, just the low hum of the air, conditioner and the silence outside, until I heard it again dot my name, spoken from the direction. Of the lake dot not shouted dot just offered, like an invitation. I don't remember putting on my boots. I don't remember grabbing the flashlight. I just remember the walk, shorter this time, easier, like the path had been cleared, Stillwater, was waiting. The surface was perfectly smooth. Black as oil, it didn't reflect the moonlight. It didn't reflect anything. I stood at the edge and whispered, what do you want? And it answered dot not with words, with memory. Suddenly I was nine years old again. Hiding in the closet while my father smashed holes in the wall downstairs, screaming that he knew my mother was lying. I was seventeen, standing in the hallway while my mother told me to pack my things, that I reminded her too much of him. I was twenty-four staring at my phone, not answering her calls. I was all of them, at once, and the lake said, come home. And I almost did. I stepped in, once, twice dot water up to my knees, warm and wrong. Then I heard another voice dot my mother's, but not the way I remembered it. Not tired, not bitter, young, gentle, from before. Don't, she said dot just that, and it was enough. I ran, haven't been back since. Sold the house to some real estate company in Dallas. Told them to burn it down for all I cared, but the lake followed me dot in my dreams dot in the silence. Between songs dot and the bathroom mirror, when I wipe the steam and see something standing behind me that disappears when I turn around. Stillwater doesn't. Drown you dot it remembers you dot it waits, and if you ever hear it call your name, don't answer, because it doesn't want your body dot it wants your regret. The house had been in our family for five generations. A two-story Victorian with sagging eaves and gingerbread trim, rotting under the Texas sun like an old corpse in Sunday clothes. It sat at the edge of a dying town called Sillsby, about two. Hours northeast of Houston, surrounded by pine woods so thick they drowned out the sky. The nearest neighbor was six miles away, and even they hadn't stuck around since their trailer burned down last fall. People didn't last long out here dot my uncle Eli was the last one to live in the house. He died in it. I hadn't spoken to him. Since I was seventeen. He was a hard man, hard voice, hard hands, hard eyes. A former preacher, though you'd never know it by how he drank. After my dad passed, Eli kept the property and I never went back, until I got the call. Uncle Eli had been found dead in the parlor. Doors locked from the inside, no sign of struggle, no injuries. Just sitting upright in his recliner, eyes wide open, mouth full of blood. They said it was a stroke, but they also said his tongue was missing. The sheriff chalked that, up to postmortem rodent activity. I wasn't so sure. Still, it was mine. Now the house. The land. All forty-two acres of east Texas scrub and pine and secrets. I drove out in early September with the intention of sorting through the estate, clearing the place out and selling it. Just a weekend. Maybe four days, that was the plan. The house had that smell, the kind that burrows into your clothes and your teeth. Mold, dry rot, old dust soaked with sweat and paper and mildew. I found the recliner where he died, still stained. Still damp, high. Slept in the upstairs bedroom I used to stay in as a kid. The first night was quiet, the second wasn't. I woke up around two thirty AM to the sound of footsteps downstairs, slow, deliberate. Like someone walking barefoot across the warped. Pine floors. I froze, listened, tried to convince myself it was the house settling dot and then the footsteps. Stopped, and something whispered my name, not shouted. Not called, whispered, close. I waited until sunrise, clutching the revolver I found in Eli's knitstand. In the daylight, the house looked the same, old, brittle, and harmless, but something had changed. I noticed a trapdoor in the parlor I didn't remember, half hidden under the rug. Rusted hinges, no handle. I didn't open it. Not yet dot instead. I dug through Eli's papers, journals, sermons, notes scrawled in the margins of his. Bible. The last entry was two weeks before his death. The handwriting was different, jagged, panicked. It said, the voices are in the walls, the tongues are underneath. God help me. I tried not to feed it. I tried. The next page was torn out. That night, the whispers came back, not just my name. Other words too. Words I didn't understand. Harsh consonants, drawn out vowels, repeated in a rhythm that felt older than language. I left the bedroom, and crept to the stairs. The parlor light was on. The rug had been pulled back, and the trapdoor was open. I don't remember walking toward. It dot one moment I was at the top of the stairs dot the next. I was standing above the open hatch. Staring into a darkness that swallowed the flashlight, beam hole, the smell hit me dot copper, decay. Wet stone, I climbed down. The cellar was bigger than it. Should have been deeper than the house's foundation. Dug out by hand. The walls were covered in carvings. Not words, symbols. Circles inside circles, eyes, mouths. Spirals that seemed to writhe when I looked too long dot in the center was a pit. Fresh dirt, shallow. Something was buried there. Started to dig dot I don't know why. I didn't want to, but my hands moved on there. Pwned dot after about two feet, I found bones, small, dry, child-sized. Then I found a jar, glass. Stoppered with wax dot inside it, a human tongue. Perfectly preserved dot there were dozens of jars, lined up neatly behind the wall, hidden behind a panel that swung open like a cabinet. Each one filled with tongues, some black with age, some pink and fresh dot the whispering grew louder dot not from behind me dot from inside me dot. I stumbled back up the stairs, locked the hatch, and ran. I should have left then. Driven all the way back to Houston. And never looked back, but the house wouldn't let me. The doors wouldn't. Open dot not jammed, sealed dot the windows wouldn't break. The phone was dead. My cell was fried. The whispers turned into laughter, and the house began to change, not all that. Once, slowly. First the wallpaper peeled back in long strips, revealing symbols etched into the plaster beneath. Then the lights began to flicker, pulsing in time with my heartbeat. Then I started seeing him. Uncle Eli, standing, in the hallway, standing at the foot of my bed, tongueless. Bleeding, staring, he didn't move. Just pointed, toward the trapdoor. Tried to burn the house. The matches went out, the gas wouldn't light. I tried to pray, but every time I opened my mouth, I felt something crawl across my tongue. On the fourth night, I gave in. I went down into the cellar. The pit was open dot no more dirt, just a staircase spiraling down dot far deeper than the earth, should go. The air was wet and warm and thick with a sound that wasn't a voice, wasn't a word, but was inside me dot it. Sighed, finished what was begun. So I brought my knife, and I brought my tongue, and I left it there, in the last jar, now. I live in the house, like Eli did, like the ones before him. I keep the trapdoor locked during the day. I patch the wallpaper when it peels. I keep the parlor clean, but at night, I hear them moving beneath dot and sometimes new voices call to me from the woods, people who don't know better. People who will come, and I will greet them, because this is. What the house is now dot it is hunger dot it is memory dot it is family, and blood remembers. There's a stretch of highway out past La Bocque that no one talks about dot it doesn't have a name. Not on any GPS, not even on paper maps, the few that still exist. No signs, no exits, no mile markers. Just a long, narrow, two-lane road that appears. Only when you're already too far in to turn around. I found it on a Wednesday night, just after dusk, driving back to Austin from a work trip in Clovis. The sun had dropped fast, the sky smeared with that blood orange glow that makes everything look like it's burning. I was running low on gas, low on sleep, and trying to shave twenty minutes off the trip by taking backroads. That was my first mistake. The road had no name, just appeared out of the trees to my right, sharp angle. Gravel shoulder, thick weeds all around. I don't know why I took it. I wasn't lost. I wasn't curious. I just turned. Like something nudged the wheel dot my GPS immediately cut out dot signal gone. I figured it was just a dead zone. Kept going. The asphalt was cracked and faded, the yellow. Lines barely visible, no signs, no traffic. The trees on either side grew thicker, taller, east Texas pines, dense and dark like walls. I drove for what felt like an hour dot no towns. No gas stations. No houses dot just trees dot and then I passed her, a woman, on the side of the road. Dressed in white, head down, barefoot. Her hair was long and matted, hanging over her face like wet rope. I didn't stop, just drove past too fast. To get a good look. In the rearview, she didn't turn to watch, she just vanished, I blinked. Looked again, nothing dot no one. Ten minutes later, I passed her again, same spot. Same dress. Same angle of her head, like I'd looped, like the road had reset. I pulled over, opened the door. Ma'am? I called. She didn't move. I stepped closer. That's when I saw her feet. They weren't touching the ground. She was hanging, inches. Above the pavement, suspended by something I couldn't see. I jumped back. The air around her buzzed, like cicadas. Like electricity. Like static from an old TV turned up loud in a quiet room. She lifted her head, and I saw my mother's face, mouth wide open. Black holes where her eyes should be. Skin gray and slick like something pulled out of a well. I ran to the car and peeled. Out, tires screaming. The road twisted tighter. Trees leaned inward. The sky went black, no moon, no stars, no horizon dot just her. Appearing again every few miles, closer each time, sometimes in the rearview. Sometimes standing in the middle of the road. Once, crouched on the hood of the car, grinning through. The windshield with teeth too long and too many. I drove. Until the fuel light came on dot then the engine died dot silence dot no wind dot no insects dot no escape. The road behind me was gone. Swallowed by trees, no headlights, no movement, just the dark. I sat in the car for what felt like hours, afraid to move. Afraid to blink. Afraid to see her again dot and then the radio turned on dot not music dot not static, just a voice dot low. Familiar, whispering. My name, Daniel. No one knew that name anymore. I hadn't used it in years, Daniel. Then a second voice joined it dot feminine, gentle, wrong, you left me. It said dot the windshield cracked, not shattered, just one line, then another, spreading like veins. The air went cold. The steering wheel felt wet, slick with something. That smelled like pennies. I couldn't breathe. Then I remembered, the accident, ten years ago. Back in high school, me and Melissa, prom night. Whiskey in the glove box, rain on the pavement. The tree came out of nowhere. I survived. She didn't. I never told anyone, said. I blacked out. Said she was driving dot and now here she was, waiting. I stepped. Out of the car. The forest was gone, just endless road, and her, standing thirty feet away. Smiling with her head tilted too far to the side. You remember now, she said. Good, she opened her mouth and screamed, not with sound dot with memory, every lie I told. Every time I saw her face in the dark. Every bottle I drank to forget. Every time I almost confessed. All of it at once poured into my skull like boiling water. I dropped to my knees dot begging dot crying dot she knelt beside. M E, put her hand on my cheek dot and whispered, now it's your turn. Then she was gone dot so was the car dot so was the road. Then she was gone dot so was the car dot so was the road, just me standing alone in the dark. I walked dot and walked and I'm still walking. Sometimes I see other cars dot other people. They don't stop. They never do. Watch them take the turn, the same one I did. The road finds them. The road keeps them. I think I'm part of it now, just another voice on the radio, calling out to the next lost soul. When the sun goes down and the pine trees lean in close and the highway you're on disappears behind you without a trace. If you ever find yourself on that stretch of road near Lubbock and you see a turn with no sign, don't take it, because once you do, the road remembers dot and so do the dead. It started with the well, not the one out by the cattle barn, the modern one piped into the house. I'm talking about the old well, the one nobody used anymore. The one my grandfather bricked over in seventy-six after his brother fell in and broke. His back. That's what they told us anyway. The truth was no one ever liked to talk about it. Just that it was bad luck, that it was old, that we shouldn't go near it. When I was a kid, I thought it was haunted. When I got older, I just thought it was nonsense, but I was wrong. I inherited the land after my father died, cancer, fast and mean, just like it took his father. Our family ranch was thirty-seven acres of dry, sunbitten earth north of San Angelo, mesquite trees, clay soil, cattle fencing that had mostly rusted down. My father hadn't kept it up for years. After the funeral, I came down from Dallas to settle his estate. I didn't plan on staying long. The ranch house was just as I remembered, low-roofed and square, built in the forties with thin walls and dust in every corner. It smelled like old coffee, dried sweat, and something else I couldn't name. Something sweet but wrong, like rot dot it was worse than the cellar. I found it on the second day beneath a warped rug in the pantry. I didn't remember there being a door there, but it was real, rusted hinges, padlocks snapped off like someone had ripped it free. The steps creaked all the way down dot it wasn't a cellar dot it was a tunnel, dug straight through the clay, barely wide enough to crouch in. The air was thick, wet. The smell of the sweet rot was stronger here. I followed it for maybe thirty feet before it opened into a circular chamber. Dirt walls, roots poking through like fingers and in the center, the well. The old well dot it had no bricks anymore, just a hole in the ground, rimmed with blood-colored stones and something whispering from inside. I couldn't hear the words, just the cadence, like prayer. I ran, slammed the trapdoor shut, pushed the refrigerator over it, told myself I was imagining. It that night, I dreamed of my father. He was standing at the foot of my bed, soaked in something dark and thick. Not blood, mud, red and slick and dripping from his jaw. His mouth moved, but no sound came out. When I reached for him, he grabbed my wrist and pulled. I woke up on the pantry floor. The fridge was moved. The trapdoor was open. I didn't sleep the next night. Sat in the kitchen with a shotgun across my lap and a bottle of bourbon at three fourteen. Mm, I heard it dot scraping dot from beneath the floorboards dot like nails or bone. I went back down. I don't know why. The tunnel was longer this time, the air warmer. The walls pulsed slightly like they were breathing. The well was uncovered and someone was standing beside it, back turned to me, pale, thin, wearing a denim jacket I recognized from an old photo of my uncle, Jesse, the one who'd fallen in back in. Seventy-six. He turned slowly. His eyes were gone. His mouth was sewn shut. He raised one hand, palm up, and pointed at the well. "That's..." When I heard the voice again, clearer now, deeper dot it spoke from inside the pit, using words I should not have known, words I hadn't heard since I was a boy hiding under pews in the Baptist church, back when my grandfather used to mutter passages from some old battered book that didn't have a title. "Blood remembers," it said, "and blood returns." The ground shook. A root snapped loose from the ceiling and sliced open my cheek, turned and ran again, but the tunnel was longer. I crawled for what felt like hours. When I emerged into the pantry, the sun was up. My hands were raw, my face swollen, the fridge was back in place dot the trapdoor gone, like it had never been there. I should have left right then. Packed up and driven north and never looked back, but I didn't because I had nowhere else to go. I started digging through my father's things dot in a locked drawer in his bedroom. I found a journal dot the first page said, "Do not feed the well." The entries that followed were a descent into madness, or maybe just truth. He talked about dreams, about voices, about things crawling out of the well, not always human, about the sickness that had taken him and his father and his brother. How it wasn't cancer dot how it was inheritance. I read the final entry three times before I tore it out and burned it. "It needs us. It chose our blood. If I don't feed it, it will take from the land, the cattle, the crops, the sky. If I die without a son to bury me, it will starve. And it will crawl up the walls of this house and drag us all back down." That night, it rained for the first time in six months. I went out to the backfield. The ground was soft, the air humming, and the well was open again, right where it used to be, past the fence line, under the dead pecan tree. A perfect circle in the dirt, rimmed with redstone dot no sign of tools, no footprints. Just the whole dot and a whisper, "Welcome home, Daniel." That wasn't my name dot it was my father's and my grandfather's before him, but the voice didn't care dot it. Just wanted blood dot so now I stay. I feed the land out the coyotes that wander too close. The deer I find gutted in the brush, a drifter once, though I don't like to think about that. I hear them scratching at night, under the floorboards dot the hungry ones dot the family. I haven't seen my own reflection in days. The mirror just shows the well dot and something climbing out of it. If you ever drive north of San Angelo and smell something, sweet in the air like sugar mixed with rot, turn around. There's no ranch here, just a hole in the ground and the ones who remember.